Good afternoon and welcome to the Peoria City Council Special Meeting. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence in the Fledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Ames?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlott.
Here.
And Councilmember Leoni.
Yeah. Thank you. Before we get to the study session agenda, which is the beginning of the discussion about the 2014 budget study session, I have one speaker request form, and I'm not going to condemn this person to wait until 9:00 PM to speak at the end of the meeting. Emily Sarbacher. I don't know if I have your connection name right or not. You have three minutes. Right up here.
Good evening. My name is Emily Sarbacher, and as a member of the City of Peoria Youth Advisory Board and a junior at Glendale Preparatory Academy, I'm here today to ask all of you to consider allocating monies from the Economic Development Fund to offset some of the impact fees assessed to the new home of Glendale Preparatory Academy and Archway Classical Academy Glendale. Although I'm only a high school student, I do see how Glendale Prep moving to Peoria is a win-win for both my school and the city of Peoria. Obviously, my school has found a wonderful location that is nestled in an amazing community. Our facility will allow us to have sports practices and games at our school and will allow us to use our space to maximize the needs of our school. Tonight, I want to express to you what Glendale Prep has to offer to the city of Peoria. As a charter school that was founded in 2008, we are a known entity. Our reputation is amazing, and we are known for providing students with a rigorous academic curriculum while simultaneously developing great-hearted students who understand and strive toward truth, beauty, and goodness. We have 350 students in grades six through 12, but our new facility will allow us to also serve students in kindergarten through fifth grades, increasing our total enrollment to nearly 1,000 students. And given our new location, most of the families will likely be Peoria residents. Our school will also help increase employment in Peoria. We will employ over 100 people, which will offer challenging job opportunities to many of the residents in Peoria. It will allow more people to not just live here, but also work. My family has moved a lot, and I know that when my parents are looking at homes, they are always interested in the strength of the local schools. I used to think it was simply because they wanted strong schools for my siblings and me. It wasn't until later that I realized my parents had another motive: money. My mom, an econ major, and I were discussing different topics, and she explained how strong schools increase home values and that buying a home is an investment. Great schools raise home values. Glendale Prep will help raise the home values in Peoria. Having a school with a solid reputation and long wait lists that Glendale Prep has will enhance the image of Peoria and drive more families into the wonderful city. In 2008, when Glendale Prep opened, there were many families coming all the way from Anthem. My family was one of them. Just from Anthem, I know three families who have all moved to be closer to Glendale Prep, and now all three of them own homes in Peoria. I also know that three other families who are seriously thinking of doing the same. I also know that the building of our future home will generate thousands of dollars in city construction sales taxes, so we are already helping the economy of Peoria. In closing, I strongly believe that allocating money from the Economics Development Fund to help us build our school meets the mission of our city. The mission states, "The city of Peoria provides excellent municipal services by anticipating community needs, creating partnerships, promoting sustainability, and embracing diversity." From my perspective, number one, what the city needs is a top-notch academic institution that serves kindergarteners through seniors and high school. Glendale Prep and Archway Glendale provide this. Number two, creating a partnership between the city of Peoria and Glendale Prep and Archway Glendale will be a long-term relationship that will greatly benefit the residents of Peoria. Number three, promoting sustainability is about meeting our needs today and not compromising the future generations. Glendale Prep and Archway Glendale are truly about future generations. To withhold monies from the Economic Development Fund today will not only keep us from meeting our needs today, but will greatly compromise our future generations. And four, embracing diversity is supporting the first K-12 public charter school in the city of Peoria. Please show us that the city of Peoria stands behind their mission statement and help us by decreasing our impact fees through the Economic Development Fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Swenson, you're up. I think I want you to use the little one.
Working yet? Okay. Very good. Good. Thank you, Mayor Barrett, council members. It's always difficult to follow a good speaker. You did a very nice job. It's my privilege this evening to present the recommended 2014 budget to the council. And I don't have an opportunity to present formally to the council very often, so as you know, I am accustomed to using the podium when I do so, so thank you for your indulgence in letting me do that. This will be one of the shorter budget presentations, I think, that I've ever made in my career, and that's really due to the fact that we have before you a very much a stay-the-course budget. It's a conservative budget. It is, in many respects, a mirror image of last year's budget with some modest changes, and therefore, my presentation is a little shorter than you're accustomed to me giving at this point in the process. But we will be happy to go into any level of detail that the council wants over the next few sessions. And what we have, as you know from emails you've received from the staff, we have several meetings scheduled. First, of course, this evening. We have tomorrow night, beginning at 5:00 here, to continue with the department overviews that we will begin this evening. Then, coming back next week on the 10th, we have the Capital Improvement Program, a presentation and discussion, the Economic Development Presentation and Prioritization. And then, coming back on Friday, the 12th, beginning at 9:00 PM, the special events discussion, utility rates, and any additional items that the council has brought up, or any reconciliation or follow-up items that might remain. What we have for you this evening, after my introduction, Katie Gregory will get into the financial overview that gives the synopsis and kind of high-level review of the economic realities and financial realities that underpin the budget. And then, we'll move right into the department overviews. And this is a feature, of course, that councils in the past have given us feedback, that they really appreciate the overviews. And this is the order that we will begin with this evening, starting with the city clerk and going on down through the fire department. We're also prepared to go longer if the council would like, depending on how fast you move through these. We have the Public Works and Utilities Director and Community Services Director, as well as the City Manager's Office Budget, for example. And of course, if you take more time than we're anticipating, that's just fine, too. We'll go through them as quickly or as slowly as the council likes. The most important thing is that you have an opportunity to fully understand the information that's presented, ask any questions that you'd like, and interact with the directors. Just a little bit on the logistics. What we'll do, and the reason that already Rhonda, the city clerk, is up at the table, is what we'll do is we'll kind of move people up to the table and back as their presentation comes nearer, so there'll be some movement there, but hopefully, it won't disrupt the flow of the presentations or your opportunity to ask questions. We'll only have one individual from each department coming to the table. That'll be the director. But if there are questions that the director would like assistance from their staff on, they'll have their staff here in the audience that can come down and provide additional detail to illuminate the answers if necessary. So with that, I'll jump into my overview. I'm very pleased to recommend this budget to you this evening. It's the culmination of a lot of work that the staff puts into the budget. It's one of the most important things that we do every year, not just as a financial management tool, but really as a planning tool. It really is the planning document, the planning activity, that translates your direction into the operations of the city. And as such, we have taken to heart the direction that the council has given us. And you'll recall, beginning after the new council was seated after the election, that one of the first things we did was have the budget update and what we refer to as early budget direction. That meeting on January 15th was very important. It not only sets the tone for the work that the staff does to put the budget together, but most importantly, it gives us the parameters that we know are important to you, so that when we bring a budget back to you, we are, with a level of certainty, bringing a budget back to you that is what you expect of us. So that early direction is important. Of course, we have had a couple of other, four other meetings that have been important in the preparation of this as well. The Economic Development Initiatives Meeting on February 5th, the infrastructure discussion on February 19th, on March 1st, a very, very important discussion, the goal-setting discussion, where you reaffirmed council goals and gave us some additional goal direction that we've worked to incorporate into the budget. And then, finally, we had a development process discussion here on March 5th. That information also has been included into the budget, the direction that gave us that. Just a bit on the goals, and you've certainly heard me say this before, we take the goal-setting very, very seriously that the council provides to us. You're the leaders of the city, of the community. You represent the direction that the city is going through, the leadership you give us of your policy goals. We take those goals and we build those goals into the service delivery of the city, so that the work of the departments, the leadership that the deputy managers and I provide for the organization, are all rooted in the goals that you provide for us. So I won't read them to you. You all are very familiar with those goals. But you will see in the presentations that the directors make that we reflect on these goals in the work that the department undertakes, and we work hard to make sure that the goals are front and center in our service delivery and budgeting for the city. The financial outlook for the city is one that is, one of limited growth, limited revenue. Again, from the earlier discussions that you've had with the staff, you know that we're not seeing a robust recovery. We're seeing a recovery, and that's certainly good, but it's a very gradual, very slow -- the word that the Budget Office had in a previous slide that I changed a little bit was muted growth. It's a very, very modest growth that we're seeing in our revenue, but it's growth nonetheless, and we should feel good about that. The budgets for the departments, though, corresponding to that modest growth are tight. So what we see in fair measure in the department presentations is the service delivery regime that we had last year. We're having some very, very modest increases in some areas, but by and large, it's the same budget that you saw last year in most of the departments. And the final checkmark there that I wanted to mention was thinking creatively. And what we mean by that is we have continued some of the practices and principles that helped us through the downturn, even though we're out of the downturn, per se, and we're starting to see some modest growth. For example, when we recently promoted Jeff Tyne from Budget Department Director to Deputy City Manager, rather than simply fill that director position, we looked introspectively into that department, into that service, to see if we needed to fill that position or if there was another way that we could provide the same level of leadership and departmental oversight without filling that position. And as you all know, we concluded that we could, and that enabled us to take that position and reclassify it to a less costly position and reallocate the position to help with customer service. And so that was transferred into the manager's office to help with customer service for the council office and manager office at a much reduced salary from what we had. So that's just one example of many that are going on throughout the city all the time. As we continue to use the principles that helped us through the downturn, even though we're coming out of it, to maximize the money, maximize the dollars for the service delivery objectives that we have. As I mentioned, we're taking a conservative approach, and that has served us well in the past, and we're confident it will continue to serve us well in the next few years as we have this slow recovery. We're very strategic in our budgeting, as you know. This has been a principle that has served us well as we have navigated through the downturn. We are addressing the council goals, as I mentioned, and you'll see in the presentations. We continue the principle of performance management and performance measurement as one of the foremost principles of how we assure that we're getting the most for the taxpayers' money for the services we provide. As you know, this gives us an opportunity to benchmark with other cities, to look deeply into the cost of service, and to track how we're able to provide service for the greatest cost efficiency. And finally, we've continued with our core service delivery model. This is a model where we focus on the core services in each of the operations of the city and maximize the efficiency of the core service delivery in each area, and that is continued in this budget as well. Just a couple of final comments on some of the key objectives. Maintaining fiscal and financial integrity has been one of the hallmarks of the city of Peoria, both in council leadership and in staff work. And we follow the principles of sound financial management very, very closely, religiously, might I say. We do not deviate from those principles in our staff work, and the council's support of those principles has been very important to the fiscal stewardship of the city. Customer service continues to be a hallmark. I know it's very, very important to the council. It's important to the staff. And in some of the modest changes you'll see in the departments, it's where we're building back maybe in areas of customer service where we might have cut a little deeply. We're thinking, okay, we need, as I mentioned, the position in the manager's office and council where we had taken a pretty deep cut in customer service. We moved the position in there. We're keeping a real close eye on that customer service metric to make sure that we're putting the necessary resources to customer service. Balanced service delivery. This is one that really came from you when we had the discussion in this room on January 15th, where you talked about not just the balance of service across departments, but importantly, the geographic balance, making sure that we were providing the services geographically in the same measure in the northern part of the city that we are in the southern part of the city, for example. We've taken that direction very seriously, and you'll see that that's reflected in the budget that we're presenting to you over the next few meetings. Minimizing the impact to the taxpayers. Again, we did not raise taxes during the downturn when a lot of governments were forced to do so, and we're not raising taxes yet again in this budget, so no tax increases on the citizens of Peoria. Planning for growth really reflects what we're seeing now in terms of the change in the construction climate. We're now beginning to see, as you know from the previous discussions we've had with staff, we're beginning to see because of housing values rising, we're starting to see builders coming back into the market, we're starting to see developers getting their land entitlements, and that is a workload increase. And so we do have a growth in staff to keep up with that increased activity that we're seeing, to provide accurate customer service that's important to all of us. Workforce planning is an element that is reflected in a number of things that we do for and support of the staff initiatives. We have, as a service organization, over 70% of our budget is people, of course, and investing in them is one of our top priorities. And so we have here some additional training that we're building in and other support activities for our employees going forward, and that's reflected in the concept of workforce planning. And finally, economic development. And I don't need to really say anything about that. That's a top priority for the council. We've talked about it quite a bit. It's built into the budget in a number of ways, and we have a session planned for later in the process about that. And that's reflected on this slide. We have four key areas that the council has expressed interest in having some considerable discussion about, and the staff feel it's important to get some good direction from the council about. So you'll see here on the 10th of April, we have the Capital Improvement Program and that Economic Development Prioritization Direction. On the 12th, we will have the Special Events Discussion. This is important to get good direction from the council and good budgeting for the special events that we plan for the city a year ahead. And finally, the utility rates, something that we need to talk to the council about in terms of making sure that we have funds available for the operations and growth of the utility system. So in summary, it's restrained recovery. It's very, it's good that we're recovering, but it is not robust, so we're monitoring things very closely as we have in the past. We're very responsive to the council's interests, as reflected in the goals and other discussion points that I've mentioned. We're maintaining our core services and service levels that citizens really value from the city of Peoria. We are balancing the allocation of our resources across departments and geographically across the city, and we're maintaining the principles of sound financial management and fiscal stewardship that have served us so well. So we have a balanced budget, and we're looking forward to talking with the council over the next few sessions and gaining your interest in answering your questions. That's all I have, and I'll turn it over to Katie.
Before you start, I'd like to make a couple of comments. This is, this is going to be kind of an interesting budget. The public expectations, I think, are on the upswing. They're sitting there, they're reading the newspapers about how the economy's recovering, you know, more taxes are being collected than everything else. And while we are seeing some uptake, it isn't as great as they're being led to believe by the media. So I think one of the things we're going to have to do is try to manage public's expectations. Three years ago, you weren't getting lights for your ballpark or whatever it is that you want. Everybody understood that because they were fighting for jobs or to hold on to jobs. We've had a slight recovery, so the expectations are up. You read the newspaper, everything's great. I don't think that's true. We managed to avoid disaster because we were fiscally conservative, we were very careful with our money. And I think that's a policy we need to continue to follow through this budget, because I don't think it's there. And I think sequestration has a very real possibility of throwing us back into a recession. So I would be very careful about what we do fiscally as we go on. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carl. Council, as you recall, in January, Jeff brought forward to you the first look at the city's long-range forecast and provided some kind of context to our revenue sources in the city and how our local sales tax is received. And he had a number of things, other economic considerations that we discussed at that time. Tonight, I'd like to share just some, a little bit of updated information, not only on our forecast, but also some updated economic information, and give you an overview of the recommended 2014 budget. So as Carl mentioned and as we've discussed in the past, the principles of sound financial management really are the touchstone for the city. This is what, as you've mentioned, Mayor, as well, has kind of helped us through the economic downturn. The 2014 budget was also developed with the principles in mind. This basically provided our guidelines for our fiscal planning and management and sets our goals for both our current and future financial position. Each year, we update our five-year long-range forecast, and that incorporates both revenue and expenditure estimates for all of the city's major operating funds. And it includes revenues that are anticipated to be sustainable over the five-year period. So we're marrying recurring revenues with recurring expenditures. We also fully fund our various reserve requirements, and of course, any amount above that is what we use for what we call one-time available funding to be put into the budget, and that you'll see a number of those as we go through the department presentation this evening. I first want to just take a moment to kind of give you an overview of just a quick glance at the economic outlook. As a staff, we spend a considerable amount of time looking at the various economic indicators, both at a federal, state, and local level. I'll give you just some overview of some of these, but the three main that we look at are job growth, consumer confidence, and housing stats. We do go to the experts, many of them you've probably heard of, the Eller College of Management, Elliot Pollak, a number of the experts that are out there. We listen to them, we go to their presentations, we find out what's really happening, not only at the national level, but what's happening at the local level. And in terms of job growth, we have been seeing some modest improvements in job growth nationally, but we've actually seen a little bit better in the more, in the state area. But you have to remember that we lost about 300,000 jobs in Arizona during the downturn, and at this point, we've recovered about a third of those. There is some expectation that in fiscal year 13 and 14, we may begin to recover as much as 160,000 jobs, but as you mentioned, Mayor, if the federal spending cuts go into place, there may be some residual impact to the state, up to 50,000 jobs lost just in relationship to some of those spending cuts. So we want to be very cautious in this area and just understand, you know, what the outlook looks like. Another indicator that we look at is consumer confidence, and this is an important indicator to us because we are very, one of our major revenue sources in the city is sales tax, and we've gone through that a number of times with you. And one of the things that we want to be sure is that this really measures the degree of optimism that consumers feel about their overall state of the economy and their personal financial condition. It's really what drives spending. Because sales tax are so important to us, we want to make sure that we're following this, and as changes in consumer spending occur, we will begin to feel the impact in Peoria. So we just need to be aware of this. As you can see, if you look at this from a historical perspective, this last recession, we went to basically an all-time low in consumer confidence. And while we're starting to see that move up, it's moving up at a little slower rate than we've seen in the past, and again, just an indicator that we need to keep an eye on as we go forward. I know that through a number of discussions with council over the past few years, we've spent some time talking about the distressed properties in Maricopa County, and we used to have those nice maps. Well, I'm happy to say that those maps, we're not showing you those maps, because what they're showing us is that that inventory of distressed property has really declined, and we're back to what we would call more normal levels as far as housing inventory in the valley. And that's important, but we also have to understand that possibly some of that is being driven by investors. And so with that, you know, there may be, that may be something, and while home prices are going up, and we're all enjoying that home prices are going up, we don't know how much, how robust this is going to be going forward. So while we don't want to keep showing the maps of what's going on and where we are in distressed properties, we do want to start thinking about what this means to Peoria as we go further, and as we start to increase our housing starts, excuse me, our housing starts, and as we start to see those prices go up, how are we planning for that in the future? What's that going to mean to Peoria as we go forward? And with that, just to show you, this is our trend line on housing starts, single-family permits issued. And as you can see, the reduced inventory does bode well as we start looking at new home starts. So you can see on the tail end there, we're starting to see some of those move up. We also, recent market data from ASU does cite Peoria as the third-most active community behind Gilbert and Goodyear for new home permits. So that's some good news for Peoria. So a lot of the experts' prescriptions for Arizona and the economy in 2013 and 14 is that we need to remain patient and keep a positive attitude, which I think is a nice way to phrase it. Some of that cautious optimism kind of sentiment is out there. So that's really how we've structured the budget going forward. We want to ensure that we're responsible with the revenues that we are estimating and that we believe we're going to be seeing, but we also want to do that with some cautious optimism going forward. We'll talk a little bit about the budget by the numbers here. The budget for fiscal year 14 is $468,000. This is about a one-point, excuse me, million dollars. This is about a 1.6 decrease, percent decrease, over the prior year, and this decrease is primarily driven by a decrease in our capital budget, but it also, but our 10-year capital budget, so our fiscal year 14 capital budget is slightly lower than it was in last year, but the overall 10-year capital budget is actually 13% higher than it was last year. Talk about our authorized strength. As you can see by this chart, in fiscal year 13, our total authorized strength was 1,001,04. We are proposing basically 10 and 1/2, this is a rounding item here, 10 and 1/2 positions. I'll go through those real quick. When we look at the FTE changes, we categorize them really into three areas, the first one being Pioneer Park. being Pioneer Park. And with the opening of the new Pioneer Park this year, we clearly have to have some ability to support the maintenance and operational needs of that area. These positions, we have five positions in the 14 budget, and these positions all have been recognized much earlier in our forecast. We've had this in our forecast for a number of years, and we understood that these positions would be coming online in this year. So those were planned adds, as well as in economic development and being responsive to that customer service need, where we're starting to see that increase in development activity. And because of that, we are recommending two positions in economic development. One is building inspector to help with that increased in building permits that we're seeing and increased activity. Another one is in site development, a development technician who can help with the over-the-counter review and provide some additional customer service at the counter. There's a few more positions that are being recommended in the budget, including a customer service rep in community services. This is kind of taking, we're eliminating a position in, a custodial position, and this position will help serve some of the increased activity we anticipate to get with the opening of Pioneer Park. So there is, we anticipate that we're going to have a lot more field rentals and a lot more remodeling rentals and people interested in using that park when it opens. We have another position in fire, a management analyst, to help the fire department in some of their administrative needs, network administrator in IT. And in planning and community development, we've got a position in there, a human services coordinator. And this, again, is directly related to some of what we heard from council in their council policy setting, goal setting, where there was a discussion about having the ability to help coordinate some of the social service agencies in the city with the staff here at the city to be able to help coordinate and kind of partner with those agencies so that we can provide better customer service to our citizens. So that's really an important and key position, I think, going into fiscal year 14. Lastly, there's a part-time equipment operator recommended in public works in the roll-off, the solid waste roll-off area. So if we look at the total budget by category, again, the operate, the two largest categories are our operating and our capital budget. We are, the total operating budget is 228 million, and of that, 119 million is the general fund. This is about a 6% increase over fiscal year 13. The capital budget totals 154 million for fiscal year 14. The last 18% is split evenly, basically, between debt service and contingency. This just kind of shows how our operating cost categories are broken out. As a service organization, as Carl is saying, that the majority of our costs are related to personnel. This is the general fund portion. So you can see that's about 73%. Oops, excuse me. And I wanted to get a little bit into the general fund forecast. So in January, this is the general fund forecast that we showed, and we indicated that based on the anticipated revenues, we would be challenged to support some of the cost growth assumptions and expenditure requirements, and that we would have a structural problem. So what does that mean? It meant basically that if we continue with business as we have in the past, ultimately we would not be able to support, or even now, we would not be able to support those growing needs. But we also told you at that time that we'd be bringing forward a recommended budget at the, to you here tonight. And so we've done that, oops, excuse me, today. This is what we show for our forecast. And some of the changes include, we did have better-than-anticipated health cost renewals, so that helped us with the forecast. We also, through the efforts of Chief Reese in the fire department, we were able to reduce the amount that we had assumed we would need for fire overtime. So that was a significant piece that helped attribute to our ability to get a balanced budget. We also, as we always do, reviewed our current revenues and were able to adjust the revenues by a couple hundred thousand. And as you know, every dollar counts. So we continue to, but we continue to see tight margins as we go forward in the, in the general fund forecast.
Mr. Rivera?
Good. Go ahead, please.
Okay. That was it for the forecast, if you want.
Can you again explain that page and the one before?
Yes. This is what we shared with council at the January 15 meeting, when we explained to council that as we, at that time, as we were looking at the council, at the forecast, we were understanding that we were going to have what we call a structural deficit, meaning we didn't have the recurring revenues to support the recurring expenses as the expenditure growth, as you can see there. And we didn't have that throughout the five-year period. So at that time, there were certain assumptions in the forecast, including some assumptions related to what we assumed we might need for, to cover fire overtime, some assumptions on healthcare expenditures, things like that. Since that, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Since that time, we've got updated information. We were able to adjust some of those assumptions, bring some of those down. We also were able to identify a couple hundred thousand of additional revenues that we believe we're going to be receiving on an ongoing basis going forward.
What impact do employee raises play with these numbers?
We do currently have, have some assumptions in there for employee raises. We're currently working with our labor groups on those, on what those might be for the next year and possibly subsequent years.
If I may, also, just one thing to clarify, the, there was no change in our assumptions from the first slide to the next in regard to any type of compensation adjustments.
Exactly. Yeah, we have not made any changes to those assumptions.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
So going back to the previous one, there was about a million and a half that we were short. Is that correct at that time?
In the first--
And so that wouldn't have been in the budget then, but--
I'm sorry, it wouldn't have been--
That wouldn't have been in the budget then, that--
There, in the first year, in the first year, we were showing a 1.4 million dollar deficit. And that included a number of assumptions on compensation, as well as healthcare and, you know, overtime for fire, things like that. Since that time, we've gone, we've worked with the departments, we've, particularly Chief Reese on overtime, we've received updated information on what our healthcare renewals are going to be. And we also were able to review our revenues and identify that there is about a couple hundred thousand dollars of additional revenues that we believe we can apply for an ongoing basis. We have not changed assumptions on compensation. Again, we recognize that we're in, currently in negotiations with our, with our labor groups, and that may even change this, you know, once those, once those negotiations are complete.
Yeah, I guess my question's a little bit different. It's, we're looking at a shortfall of a million and a half in your projections, was it, say, like six months ago?
Right, in January.
Less than that, less than that, okay. But now you, now you no longer have that. But if you still had that there, the budget would be different?
Well, part of our requirement is to bring forward to you a balanced budget. So we went through and reviewed and developed a budget that was balanced based on ensuring that we had the ability to cover that. We do show in the first and second year, a very small amount of what we call bridge funding, because we see in that forecast, you can see right there, as you go further out in the forecast, we're not seeing the same level of deficit. And that's an important element when you're looking, looking at a five-year forecast, is that if you're seeing that getting better, that's a good thing. The level of reduction doesn't have to be quite as severe early on--
I realize that.
--because you have that.
I think one way to look, I think Councilmember Ames, that is correct, that if all things were constant, the budget would likely have had to have made an adjustment, additional 1.4 million dollars. We could have done some other measures, but we really were looking at more of a structural problem. Due to the good efforts that we had talked about here and the fortunate revenue activity, we were able to work a budget with a little bit more ease to it, so.
So then that brings me to my next question. If this would have been the case, we wouldn't have been meeting core services, but now we are since we have an additional one point, projecting an additional million and a half? I realize this isn't, you know, it's a huge amount of money for any individual, but for the city, it's a--
I think that, and I'll let Mr. Swenson also speak, I think that it would have been a more difficult process for us. I think that, quite honestly, our first focus is to maintain those core services. I remember at the time, we had discussed that we would have to look very closely at all of our services and what we provide, and the service levels that we provide. And that probably would have been what the scrutiny would have been.
Yeah, and I think Jeff is saying that accurately, Councilmember Ames. I mean, what we, what we were talking about in January was the fact that we had, at that time, a projected roughly million and a half dollars we needed to close to bring to you a balanced budget. The way we were able to close it was through the measures that Ms. Gregory talked about. Now, had those measures not worked, we would have had to seek other ways to bring the budget into balance. So we may have had to reduce some of the, the modest little bit of growth that she mentioned, where we had some room to add a position here or there, probably would not have happened. We may have had a reduced amount of general fund availability for the ongoing expenditures in the capital program or the economic development initiatives. We would have been looking at those, those kinds of activities before we would have got into actual core service reductions, I believe. But we didn't have to do that because we were able to close that gap through the measures that Katie talked about. Is that helpful?
That's helpful, but the reason I bring this up is, you know, you talk about core services, and we want to focus on core services even if times get better. But what I'm looking at here is, as more revenue comes in, we just add, and we may be going beyond core services, so.
Well, I think that's, you know, I guess we would invite your conversation in all of the elements of the budget to see if you think that any of the adds we've made have taken it beyond the core, or if any of the expenditures we're making in the CIP or economic development are beyond that which the council wants. I mean, and I think in the, in the area of core operations, we took levels down real deeply in the, in the, in the budget cutting we did in the downturn. And you'll all recall, we made, we took the approach of cutting every six months. So we cut seven times every six months. And as we did that, we did it in a way that maintained core services in a certain area by shifting resources and a variety of other managed attrition activities that enabled us to shed expenses in a stepwise fashion to reduce our expenditures. What we're doing right now is making some very modest increases, particularly around customer service, that we feel are necessary to meet those core services. So, you know, those little bit of adjustments that we're making, those really, I think, six positions, if I'm, if my arithmetic is right here, because five of the positions that we're adding were necessary for the operation of Pioneer Park, which is coming online. So we really had, I think, six positions overall that we're, that we're bringing back because we feel like we've dipped below core services in some of those areas. Now, if you disagree, I mean, we can take those out. I mean, I think that's what the conversation's about.
Yeah, and I'm bringing this up more in terms of the future. 1.5 million is a small amount in terms of the overall budget. But next year, maybe, you know, it's 15, 25 million. Are we just going to kind of ignore core services and say we can have more and more government staff and--
No.
--spend whatever we get?
No. No, I mean, I think that's when I talk about how we're using the same principles, and I use the example of the budget director position, which is one of just many. We're continuing to use the principles that we used in the downturn in keeping our costs down, because we have budgetary pressures to increase our costs. There are a variety of things that occur in the budget that increase the cost to provide core services. So we're managing our expenditures down, even as we're seeing things that are out of our control in some cases, in terms of the cost of delivering those core services. So, and we'll be happy to get into that in each of the different budget segments we've got in front of us here.
Thank you. Sure. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, I think Councilmember Ames brings up a good point. If we're in a situation in January where we could potentially be in the hole for 1.4 million, and we're looking into closing that gap, and in a matter of less than 90 days, we're also working on finding new positions to add for this year's budget.
Well, again, we've taken-- Well, we've taken the principle that the core service delivery is critically important. So we've gone into areas, and we've seen where we may have taken cuts that we thought were deeper than were necessary or appropriate to meet that core service area. So those couple of areas where we've added people back has been to bring those, those back up. For example, the analyst in the fire department. We took deep cuts in the fire department administrative support staff during the downturn. We did not cut firefighters, as you'll, as you'll recall, but we did cut deeply into the administrative staff of the fire department. In, in working with Chief Reese, now coming back, he's accurately, I think, identified the fact that they can manage their operations better and more cost-effective if they have an analyst to support those operations. We agree with that. And that analyst is really supporting the core service. So where we've made modest improvements or additions, you might say, it's been to get those core service levels where we think they should be.
But you wouldn't be asking for those six positions if we were still in the hole?
Well, we would have been, I mean, the analysis would have been the same. I can't tell you what the outcome would have been, because we'd be trying to close the gap in different areas. These are very important positions, and they may well have made the cut. But, you know, it, I can't say for sure if we had not been able to close the gap in another way. I don't know, maybe Katie or Jeff can give a little perspective on that.
I'm not, I'm not sure we're getting anywhere with idle speculation. That's what this is. As these positions come up, if you don't like them, you can bring it up at that point in time.
That's fine, Mayor, but I just have questions. Do you have an initial?
No, what you're doing is you're asking them to speculate on what would happen if--
What I'm trying to get to, Mayor, is that these positions are important. Is that okay with you?
Well, yes, and as they come up, as they come up and as they're presented, you can then say yes or no.
That's fine, okay.
That's the way the system works. Please.
Each year, we also provide some one-time avail, we do a one-time funding available, excuse me, one-time analysis, which looks at our one-time available funding and how we might allocate those in the upcoming budget. This year, we had about 3.8 million dollars available in one time. And again, this is the amount that's, that is above our reserve requirement, but is only going to be available one time. This is not recurring revenue. And we've, we're showing you here how we've allocated that going forward. We have 500,000 dollars going to the Community Works Program, and this is the same level of funding that we've had in the past for that project. We have about a million dollars that we allocated to the general fund, CIP, to address some general fund projects or projects that we think should be, should be paid for through general fund in the capital program. These include things as the MOC Fuel Island washout area improvements, the council chamber lighting improvements, some citywide security enhancements, and some parking and structure, parking lot structure maintenance. Again, we'll go through those more specifically during the capital improvement program discussion. We also have one-time allocations in the, in the budgets that you'll see as the, as the departments go through their budgets. You'll see, they'll identify if they have one-time supplementals in there. That was about 2.1 million. And lastly, we have another, we've set aside, we have not built this into the budget yet, but part of this one-time dollars we've set aside is 200,000 dollars in special events for council to discuss as part of your discussion on the 12th. This clearly has been an item that council has wanted to have a little bit more discussion on. So rather than put those events in the budget at this time, we're doing a more comprehensive review of special events and have some one-time available funding in addition to what's already been budgeted in those areas for council to, to look at.
Mr. Ames?
Actually, that was my, that was my question. This isn't starting from scratch here on special events. There's money in there.
Yes, there's, there is some ongoing dollars--
And this would be additional that we would look at.
This would be, if you wanted to, and if you recall, last year, there were a number of special events that were funded with one-time funding. One of those in particular was the P-83 party. That was about 90, $92,000, somewhere around that range. So if that's, again, that will be part of the discussion on the 12th, and council can have some discussion about what they want to add in for fiscal year 14, or continue to do in fiscal year 14. What is important to note here is that we're not quite using up all of the one-time funding that we had available. There is about 50,000 dollars that still hasn't been identified as one, as items. So if, as we go through our council discussions, if the council has an interest in an area, that may be a place we can look to do some additional things. So I'd like to take just a moment to do outlook on some of our other major funds. The half-cent sales tax fund provides funding to support certain operational functions, including some small amount for public safety, economic development, and the sports complex. It also supports our development agreement payments and debt service payments on the City Hall complex, the Performing Arts Center, and the sports complex improvements that are currently underway. In fiscal year 13, a portion of this fund was also committed to Economic Development and Opportunity Fund to further council's economic development-- Opportunity Fund to further council's economic development objectives. And that fund does continue to have the ability to support its operations. And as we will show you next week when we talk through the economic development portion, in years 17 and 18, the fund may be able to support some additional capital or economic development interests that the council may have. In the streets fund, it's primarily supported through HERF revenues and also a small amount of transportation sales tax. It supports a number of streets maintenance and traffic engineering operations. In addition, this fund supports a number of capital programs, like the street maintenance program, Community Works, and the arterial overlay program. We do run a slight deficit in this fund each year. We have sufficient fund balance to cover those. However, it is something that we watch very closely, especially since the revenue stream has been targeted by the state in the past, and we continue to watch for that. And long-term, we may have to make adjustments to this fund, but we don't foresee that need in the next five years. The transit fund is the city's dial ride and fixed route transit systems, and these are all funded through the transit fund. The fund is currently being funded by LTAF II, which is the proceeds from the Powerball Lottery. We have providing a small subsidy from the transportation sales tax on an annual basis, and this subsidy has been necessary since 2010, when the state of Arizona stopped the distribution of the LTAF $1. And again, we want to watch this as time goes on, but for now, we're able to support this fund. The last four funds are, we anticipate some very, these are the water fund, the wastewater fund, and our utility funds, basically. And we do anticipate a very small increase recommended in water and wastewater, but we do have some time on the 12th also to go through this with you and talk through each of these funds at that time. Switching gears slightly, want to talk a little bit about the capital program. You can tell from our pretty rainbow pie up here that we have a number of various areas that are supported in our capital program. If you look at this, whether it's noticeable or not, economic development has increased over the last year. That's because we've been able to move, we've been able to ensure that we're funding some of council's priorities in economic development. It totals $154 million for fiscal year 14. It includes funding for, well, traditionally, we've had a robust streets program. Obviously, water and wastewater are still a big part of this. And in parks, it includes the funding of the first phase of Community Park Number Three in the northern portion of the city at about $28 million. In addition, there's also the funding for the mixed-use redevelopment project up at the sports complex in the west parking lot. So basically, some important takeaways from the budget as recommended is that this is a balanced budget, that it continues to, once again, keep our principles in mind as we go through and maintains all of our core services. We are not proposing any sales tax or property tax increases. We are proposing very modest utility rate adjustments. It's a hold-the-line budget, so you'll see very limited additions in our operations. It addresses some of our workforce planning items, as well as new capital projects and economic development initiatives that the council has expressed interest in. Lastly, just like to go through the schedule for the budget. Today, we are starting our four night-day sessions of the council budget workshops. We'll have those through April 2nd. The tentative budget is scheduled for May 21st. This, again, is where we set the maximum appropriation for the fiscal year 14 budget. We also will, at that time, have the public hearing for the utility rates and the CIP adoption. The final budget adoption is scheduled for June 4th, and the property tax levy would occur on June 18th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, you're bringing up the utility rates at the end, but there's nothing in our book yet, I'm going to miss?
Yes, we are actually planning to get a memo out to you tomorrow that will include kind of the overview typical memo that you've seen in the past, where it's kind of explained with our utility rates, kind of what we're recommending. And then we will have a full session on that next Friday.
So we'll have enough advance review of it?
I believe so. We're, it's very modest. You can look at that and ask any questions, and you can direct those directly towards me.
I just don't want to wait till the day.
Understand.
No, we'll get it out to you tomorrow. And, Councilmember Ames, as in the past, if you have any questions, want to have some individual meetings with staff regarding anything, not just on utility rates, but on any of the subjects, we're happy to meet anytime.
Is there any other questions on that? Okay, we're ready to move into our department budgets. And we're going to start off with the City Clerk's Department. One of the things, if you were looking at your budget book, you will see that it is put together alphabetically by the tabs. I apologize that we're not going through this chronologically as the budget is.
It's on page 43, if you're looking at it.
Yes, it starts on page 43 in your budget book. It's the City Clerk's Office. This is, City Clerk has a recommended budget of $826,000 for fiscal year 14 and has 14 FT, excuse me, seven FTEs. And with that, Rhonda Jereminski is here to present for the City Clerk's Department.
So we get to work our hands a lot, right? Back and forth?
Good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to kick off this year's budget study sessions, talking about the City Clerk's budget. I would first like to take this opportunity to thank you for your confirmation of my appointment as City Clerk. I want to assure you that though I've been with the City Clerk's Office for the last five years, I do intend to look at this opportunity with a fresh set of eyes to ensure you, to ensure that we're meeting the business needs of both our internal and external customers. The City Clerk's Office is comprised of three major function areas: administrations, elections, and records. The major administration functions of the City Clerk's Office entails duties to the City Council with respect to council meetings, agendas, subcommittees, boards and commissions, as well as processing and tracking city contracts. Elections, of course, includes conducting all aspects of municipal elections and campaign finance reporting. And records functions entails public records requests, as well as retention, destruction, or other disposition of city records. All of our function areas serve to meet council's goal to build community, as well as leadership and image. We do this through the administration of open meeting laws, campaign finance reporting, and records requests. Because we provide online access to meeting notices, results, and minutes, campaign finance reports, and records request forms, we bring transparency to those areas of city government and build better relationships with our customers and promote a positive image for the city. As with all of the functions within the City Clerk's Office, our major cost driver is The City Clerk's Office also strives to meet the council's goals of enhancing current services. We conducted an internal customer service satisfaction survey in fiscal year 2012, and we intend to perform another one in fiscal year 2013 in order to gauge our customers' needs, as well as our progress. Additionally, we have enhanced many of our internal processes. By implementing online records request forms and board and commission applications, as well as the electronic records request tracking, we have enhanced our services to both our internal and external customers and improved our customer service goals. And again, in this area, the cost driver is personnel. Now, the City Clerk's Office does not have any budgetary changes for council's consideration, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera and Mr. Ames?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about, you had a 25% decrease in personnel. What kind of impact, what type of impact is that having in the department?
Well, we're currently, we currently have even a deeper cut, and the reason is because we haven't been whole for about a year. We have a current vacancy right now, and the intent is to become whole and then take a look at our needs at that time and assess what, where we're at there with our staffing needs.
So you're at seven FTEs?
We currently have six FTEs in the City Council, or in the City Clerk's Office.
So with that new position, you're going to feel that you're fully staffed?
Once we get the seventh staff member, we are then going to be assessing how to meet the needs of the customers in that regard.
Okay. On page 54, count number 520505, in-house employee training?
Yeah, this is a new area that, it was put in our budget from the non-departmental budget just this year, I believe. And what it was intended to be used for is to provide booklets for our open meeting law training and new boards and commissions trainings for the new board and commission members.
Page 53, count number 513500.
This other, you're talking other allowances?
Yes.
And that is for the communications allowances for the director.
The last question, what are we doing in the areas of record requests? I know in the past, and I know this function doesn't only fall under the City Clerk, also falls under the City Attorney, but what are we doing to improve customer service in that area? It seems that some records respond to much faster than others. What are we doing to improve that?
Well, there are two categories that we track this area. The first category is those simple records requests that the City Clerk's Office can simply obtain the documents that are requested and then provide those to the requesters, and we usually do that within about 24 hours. The second category, usually, they're more, much more complex requests, and they involve a multiple departments. The current process is that we will send out those requests and compile that information as it becomes available. We then send it to the City Attorney's Office for review and redaction. Those particular requests can take a little bit longer, but I think our average for those types of requests is approximately four and a half days. Though there are other requests that can take a little bit longer, we do believe four and a half days is an acceptable amount of time.
And I know we have elections coming up, four different seats, including the mayor's seat. Any special preparation for that, or is that part of next year's budget?
Any election budget will be in the fiscal year 15 budget because all of those services are billed to us after the election is conducted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, I'm looking at page 46 on contractual services. And I notice in FY13, it was considerably more than you have in FY14, our current one we're looking at. In fact, it's 33% less. What accounts for this?
That's for the elections that were held.
Is that because of the elections?
Yeah, so they were put in the budget one time, and so in '14, they would be taken out.
Okay. And we see it in '13 rather than the year of the election, and that's why I see it more in '11 also, because it was from the '10 election?
Yeah, FY13 covers the end of '12 and the beginning of '13 calendar year.
And that's actually outlined on page 54 of the City Clerk's budget.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anything else? Well, you got it off easy.
Up next is the combined Finance and Budget Department. Brent Mattingly has graciously agreed to take care of both of those. The budget, part of the book is on page, starts on page 1. The Finance section starts on page 319.
I would just note, they came up with a very clever name for the new department of Finance and Budget. No, Finance and Budget.
Oh, sorry, click. Be responsible for this. There we go.
So, on the chart before you, you'll see the various functions of the Finance Department, including on the right-hand side, the newly consolidated Management and Budget Department. But starting over on the left is our customer service function that includes utility billing, meter reading, as well as our customer service call center. Those are funded through the utility fund operations for the most part. Then we have our sales tax area, which also includes business licensing, collecting past-due amounts. In the middle, we have Materials Management, which is purchasing the warehouse out at the MOC, our copy center operations, mailroom, those types of things. Our Financial Services area includes typical functions, including accounting, payroll, accounts payable, our treasury functions. And then again, Management and Budget, which is just joining us, and obviously, they're responsible for the operating budget and the capital budget, as well as performance management throughout the city and providing strategic management support to other departments. The primary council goals that really relate to the Finance and Budget Department include enhancing our current services, as Carl was mentioning earlier, our prudent fiscal stewardship, as well as leadership and image. And some of the outcomes that you'll see from that, obviously managing our resources, but also providing research and information and data to people throughout the city, including county, or the City Council, our bond investors, citizens, as well as departments. Some of the major cost drivers to obtain or meet those goals are, again, personnel in the general fund, where over 70% of our cost is personnel, but also banking charges that cover the cost of processing accounts payable and payroll checks, credit card fees, wire transfer, trustee services, those types of things. We also have printing and mailing costs associated with paying our invoices, sending out sales tax returns, and utility bills to our customers. And as you're aware, we have an independent outside financial audit that's mandated by the charter, so we have a CPA firm that comes in each year and audits our city's financial records, as well as water meters, a big cost in our utility operations. In terms of budget changes, we have three budget requests in our sales tax area, and all are focused really on increasing the efficiency of our staff. First, we'd like to enhance our online e-tax system to make it easier for our taxpayers to obtain their business licenses and file their tax returns. At the same time, it's going to make us more efficient by providing better data to us from those taxpayer returns. The second, and a kind of a related item, is to redesign the sales tax remittance forms so that our OCR, Optical Character Recognition, system can better read that data and populate it. Again, that makes our staff more efficient because we aren't making those types of corrections. And the third thing we'd like to try on a one-time basis is to mail monthly statements to our taxpayer, to our business taxpayers, our sales tax taxpayers. Oftentimes, just as, you know, I might receive a monthly statement at my house from somebody reminding me that, oh, my gosh, you know, it's been a little while since I owe this bill. And that's a nice reminder to me that I can find it on my dresser and go ahead and write a check and pay that. So by reminding people of what they owe us, we believe it's going to enhance our collections.
Just a question, go ahead, Ms. Carl.
Do we currently not send out any invoices for people who owe us money?
No.
In this regard for collections?
We do send out notices and invoices to people that owe us money. This specifically focuses on our tax, on our sales taxpayers. And there were some limitations with our sales tax system, some data we needed to clean up to get us in a position where we could start sending out accurate statements to the sales, to the business owners that haven't necessarily remitted their, all of their sales tax dollars to us. So we'd like to begin doing that.
Okay, so this is for past due, commercial, sales tax remittance?
Exactly.
For collections? Okay, thanks.
Department-wide, we also have a request to restore, to restore our training budget for our staff. And this request would actually bring it back to a level of about 55% of where it was back in 2009. And we have professional staff that require, by their certification, for example, a CPA is required to obtain a certain number of continuing professional education hours each year. This supplement would allow those staff to go to more meaningful classes than they're able to go to today. Due to the reduced nature of our budget, they're doing whatever they can to find the cheapest education to meet their certification requirements. But it's not just for those CPA staff, but it's also people in our purchasing area are certified, and they have continuing professional education requirements. We have staff that we would just like to get off to meaningful, professional- We have staff that we would just like to get off to meaningful professional development training. And over the past years, during the downturn, this was one of the areas we had to cut significantly. We're asking for one-time dollars to restore part of what was cut over the last several And lastly, in our meter services area, there are a couple of requests. One is simply an ongoing six thousand dollars for fuel for our vehicles. And over the past few years, we've been over budget in fuel, and we've been scrambling to come up with the dollars to help cover that line item. So we're asking to fix that problem by adding money to our fuel budget. These, again, are the meter services people that are out in the community daily, driving around to do meter reading, as well as customer service requests, work orders, those types of things. The other request that we're making in that area is for what's called the ZONAR Fleet Management Program. And that's a web-based fleet tracking application that's currently in use in the city in the Public Works Solid Waste Division. And its function is to improve the routing of our vehicles, to make that routing more efficient, as well as to aid in dispatching vehicles that are closest to the service order that needs to be performed. It'll help us in our meter reading by looking at those meter reading routes and helping us be more efficient in how we go about reading those meters. It will improve our response time to our customers, and hopefully also cut some of our fuel costs. That's the extent of my presentation.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Ames?
You did budget and finance, is that correct? You've been through both of them.
Yes, sir.
I was looking for a change of personnel.
The only change of personnel is we have a senior accountant that is a three-quarter time position. During the cuts over the last couple of years, that person actually, they knew we had to cut our department budget, and because of their home situation with younger children, asked, they said, I'd be willing to work three-quarter time. Now that things have improved and their kids are a little bit older, they'd like to continue working full-time. As part of the movement where, that Mr. Swinson was talking about earlier, where we eliminated the budget director position and funded a position up on the third floor, there were some ancillary moves associated with that in, as, for example, Katie and people in the budget department. This was an incremental, you know, a quarter of a position that we wanted to add back in the finance department. Still, after all those changes, I think this, there were significant savings in the neighborhood of forty thousand dollars from the combination of all of those moves.
My first question is under management and budget, and it's on page four. And for fiscal year thirteen previous budget, it's eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, now seven-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, so a drop of sixteen percent. Is that because of the one less staff person?
Yes.
It's strictly that?
Yes.
Okay. And going to the finance department. So I got, everything is pretty, pretty much even, your budget here, and maybe this is what you were talking about, but you have additional staff, right? Or you dropped one staff, basically, right? One staff person here, okay.
Which page are you on, sir?
I'm on page three-twenty-nine.
Well, ours.
You've got an increase of, your total increase is one, one-point-seven percent, but you've dropped staff, actually, well, it's one FTE, thirty-seven-point-seven-five, thirty-six-point-seven-five, and that's a two-point-six-five percent drop. Of course, that's on a kind of a large number base.
Councilmember Ames, I think I can answer that. They have two sections. One is the finance, which is on page three-thirty-one. The other one is on three-thirty-two. You'll see the addition, they kind of moved that, a position to the customer service area. It's the customer service rep.
Right, that was an accounting tech that moved over from one division to another.
So overall, in the department, it stayed the same.
Okay, good. And your recommended supplemental requests, they're already in the budget, right? It's one time?
Yes, sir.
Under the categories I see there. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Patena.
Brent, can you ballpark for me the percentage of staff that you have that require ongoing training to maintain their certification?
In terms of a professional certification required for their position, or definitely preferred for their position, those would only be our certified public accountants. And I've, off the top of my head, I probably have four or five of those.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Brent, the division of procurement, I know, has taken some cuts over the years. Where are we at with that specific area?
I think that everybody, well, I know that everybody over there is working hard. The, they're all very busy, but I think that they're being productive on what they're doing, and they're meeting the types of expectations we would have in terms of service delivery to our customers and to our other departments. So I think we're doing okay.
Okay. One of the arguments made a couple of years ago to justify the cuts in that division was with the economy slowing down, that there's going to be less contracts. Now, the economy, it seems like it's improving a bit. Are you considering boosting up that area again, or?
No, sir, I think we're okay. And I think as the economy dipped, we may have seen some shift in the type of work that they were doing, but they've, they've been busy through that whole time, and I think we're staffed okay, looking forward in the future.
Okay. I've got a question on page three-forty-nine, and it's item or account number five-one-zero-one-hundred. It's wages part-time.
Yes, sir.
What is that about?
That's probably the three-quarter time position that we're asking to move to a full-time position. It's a senior accountant position.
Why is it budgeted in a different location?
Generally, positions that are considered full, full-time positions are budgeted under salaries and wages. If they're less than full-time, they get budgeted under part-time wages.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the non-departmental budget. These non-departmental budget includes items that are primarily citywide in nature. Some examples would be things like organizational memberships, such as the League of Cities, Arizona League of Cities, and the National League of Cities, as well as MAG. It also includes the budgets for the council district funds and legal investment, and investment service fees. The non-departmental budget doesn't provide services, per se, so we don't have a slide related to the service discussion. However, there are a couple of budget changes planned in the non-departmental budget. The first one is in, is related to community events, and I apologize, this is starting on page five-fifty-nine. The first one is a one-time request for ten thousand dollars for community events, and this is really primarily to allow for city representation at various community events over the last few years. There have been a number of events where staff has been asked to be part of, or there's, for reasons related to leadership and showing a regional leadership, we've wanted to be able to attend. And there really isn't anywhere where we've had that budgeted, so, for example, purchasing tables and things like that at events that both council and staff are at, we needed, we need a little bit of money. So we're budgeting it for one-time use for fiscal year fourteen in an amount of ten thousand dollars. The other item is the timekeeping and payroll study. This is seventy-five thousand dollars, one-time request. The supplement will provide funding to hire a consultant to look at the city's practices in relation to, relation to our payroll processes. This will result in recommendations that can significantly increase our efficiency, enable us to follow industry best practices, automate our paper, our today's paper-based timekeeping process, and enhance management monitoring and reporting. So if you have any questions regarding any of these, I'd be happy to answer those.
Ms. Rivera.
Katie, for community events, who will decide, how is the money going to be appropriated or approved?
I think that would primarily be through the city manager's department, as far as authorizing use of those funds for city representation at those types of events.
Was this funding in the city manager's budget in the past?
No, this is, this is, it was spread before the downturn, I think, in a number of different departments. And what we've learned over the last few years, as we've cut in a lot of different areas, is that we haven't had money available to meet the council's expectation for attending different events. Buying tables, for example, at different regional events where the council supports or the staff support the activities of the, of the group, there's often an expectation that we'll have a table, or we'll buy seats, we'll be at different meetings and events, and we haven't had a place where that money has been centrally located, and it's been difficult. And there have been some events where we've not been able to, to attend. So that, I think, is what is captured here.
The events that were funded in the past, where, where did that money come from?
I think it was scattered across the different budgets, and Jeff's trying to get in here. I think he might have a little bit better feel for exactly where. But I think we had it scattered across different budgets before the economic downturn, and in fact, in perhaps in some respects, in the council's budget. And as we made reductions in every budget over those couple of years, this was one of the things that, that got reduced. So what we've struggled with in the last year, just to add a little bit more on that, is frankly, meeting the expectations that are, that some of these groups have upon the city. We, we've struggled to be able to, to attend as I think you would like us to.
I picked up some of them, like, one of them picked up his table with GPEC. It's important for economic development people to be at the GPEC annual meeting, where they, you know, work the crowds, and the crowds work them, things like that. I've picked up several tables. To put it into one account, you know, with his authorization for these kinds of events, I think it's a good idea.
Just a suggestion, to make it cleaner, if you're going to prove it, recommend you put it in your budget.
And, you know, I should just mention, I think that, part of that was, I think, our decision, and it was generally in thought was, if it was the city manager that was indeed attending all of those functions, that would make sense. Because it is of various individuals throughout the organization, we felt the non-departmental was more appropriate. But we did understand, I think, in many of these areas, the city manager within non-departmental will be making decisions on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Ames?
Yes, I was going to ask, who heads up this department? I think we're already talking about this, but there's a big jump from thirteen to fourteen, seventy-five percent increase, and that's because we brought things in here that were elsewhere. But I did notice that facilities management, maintenance has gone up quite a bit on page From two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand to three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand. Service charges, facility maintenance. Was that elsewhere, too?
Councilmember, that, that is kind of reflecting some of the areas throughout the city that aren't specifically to a department. We then charge the upkeep of those areas to the non-departmental budget. So that's what you're seeing in those charges there.
But there's more in the, in the coming budget than there was in the past budget, noticeably more.
Yeah, that could be, too, some of the increases that they may have asked for in their budgets would get passed on to all the departments that receive those services of facilities. So that's what we call one of those internal service funds, and they get charged out to all the areas throughout the city. So it could be increases in their budget.
It's one of the ones we're counting twice, really?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Rivera?
Page five-sixty-nine. First item on, on top is five-two-zero-zero-zero-one, the legal services, public defenders.
Yes, go ahead. That, that is the, periodically, the city attorney's office needs to use some funding related to getting public defenders in the court, and this is the place where we get that. It's not part of the city attorney's budget, not part of the court's budget, so it falls under non-departmental.
And who are the public defenders typically for?
Who are they for?
Yeah.
Mayor, council, when we have criminal cases where a person may be sentenced to jail, and they are in the jail, we are required to provide them counsel if they cannot afford it on their own. And so this portion of the non-departmental budget is used to pay the expenses. We go through a competitive procurement process. We have both a standard public defender and a conflict public defender, and it's from these funds that they are paid for.
How much of this money is usually used at the end of the day? I know.
I think, it really depends, because if we have, and the reason I say that is, is, for example, if we have a larger number of, say, drunk-driving offenses or domestic violence offenses, those all tend to invoke the appointment of counsel. The same is actually true of things like shoplifting invoke the appointment of counsel. If we were to have a large number of cold cases and not very many DUIs in domestic violence and shoplifting, then we would use less. And so it really becomes a function of the types of cases. Regrettably, I have to tell you, I, we are having more of the domestic violence and the shoplifting than I would prefer.
So this number will be increasing?
I think this number's good for this year, but it's a number that does fluctuate, and it fluctuates basically because of what we're seeing in the courts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have the information technology department. They are on page four-eighty-five, and John Imig is here to provide an overview of his budget.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm happy to present the information technology proposed budget for fiscal year fourteen. In the information technology department, we have essentially seven functional areas, including help desk, desktop support, application system support, network systems, geographic information systems, or GIS, radio systems, information technology, security, and project First of all, I'll go into the operational areas of desktop support, application support, and network support. Primary council goal here, of course, is enhancing our current services. Some of our key service outcomes are enhancing customer service, keeping up with current versions and capabilities, enhancing our ability to manage network services. Such things as providing faster resolution times at the help desk or desktop support, higher rates of first-visit resolution, reduced wait times for the help desk. In application services, it's important to keep up with necessary updates, patches, and fixes to our applications, adjusting to demands for new applications and systems on behalf of all of the operating departments in the city. In network services, we, we assist all the other operating areas in new application systems, reliance on technology from other departments, and identifying and reacting to threats. Some of our significant cost drivers in these areas include hardware and software obsolescence, needing to keep hardware and software up to date. Again, the higher reliance on technology, that's across the city, hardware maintenance and life cycles, and demands from new applications which drive our software licensing. systems, reliance on technology from other departments, and identifying and reacting to threats. Some of our significant cost drivers in these areas include hardware and software obsolescence, needing to keep hardware and software up to date. Again, the higher reliance on technology, that's across the city, hardware maintenance and life cycles, and demands from new applications which drive our software licensing. In the areas of GIS, radio, and security, again, the primary council goal is enhancing our current services. In GIS, some of our service outcomes are increasing demands for products, which are growth-related, products being maps, overlays, so on and so forth, to support growth, reliance on technology, and technological advances. Some of the cost drivers in the areas of GIS include computer software maintenance, storage requirements, and ever-increasing demands for performance. Maps are getting more complicated. In the areas of radio communications, interoperability, regional partnerships, and enhanced capabilities are all of our service outcomes. Some of the cost drivers in radio include equipment, hardware life cycles, maintenance services, and our regional participation in memberships. In security, service outcomes of maintaining services, compliance with industry standards, regulations, as far as information security is concerned, identifying, reacting to and mitigating threats, and providing training and education. In the security area, some of the major cost drivers are reacting to ever-changing threats, and again, hardware and software life cycles. In the areas of administration and project management, enhancing service, enhancing current services, again, is the council goal, with the service outcomes in administration being leadership guidance, budgeting, operation of the department. And in project management, the oversight, planning, control, and budgeting of projects, with the significant cost drivers in those areas being hardware and software maintenance, and adopting new services and systems. In FY, in our FY14 proposed budget, we're proposing Microsoft licensing upgrades. This is in order to maintain existing service levels, and bringing our Microsoft licensing current with licensing requirements, and in line with new application demands for licensing. Ongoing software and hardware maintenance, this is about a 3.6 percent increase over the FY13 budget, in order to maintain appropriate maintenance services on our software and our hardware, in order to maintain a high level of uptime on our systems. We do have one FTE request in this year's budget, which Ms. Gregory alluded to earlier, which is for a network administrator. In the world of IT, you can think of it sort of as a funnel, and everything funnels through the network administration area, whether it's demands driven by our GIS services, through our application services, through our help desk services, everything goes through the network group. With new systems being brought online, and the ever-increasing complexity of systems that we have, it becomes increasingly important that we staff that area appropriately. This past year, we brought one major system and several other systems online that are demanding a high degree of work from the network administrators, and we do have a deficit in that area that does require us to make this request. In the area of IT customer service, you'll see a contractor request for a customer service representative. Over the past four years, we've had a 50 percent reduction in our staff in the desktop and help desk service area, which has required us to shift our staff around in order to maintain help desk and field services appropriately. This is really a pilot program that we're looking at in order to take our technically-focused staff members and put them in the field where they're going to be most effective. With that, we need to backfill the help desk with a customer service representative who can take the calls, really triage them from our city staff, elected officials, and so forth, in order to make sure that we get them out to the highly-trained technical staff who are in the field, in order to get these calls closed efficiently and effectively. The last one is a disaster recovery consulting, planning, and actually, phase one of an implementation. This is a three-phase project that we're looking at. This is a continuation of a project we started back in fiscal year '07, where we began working on disaster recovery. We did a significant amount of planning. We put processes into place to begin our business continuity and our disaster recovery plan. Unfortunately, with the economic situation, we were forced to put a hold on those plans until things were to return. So, this is a resumption of our planning and implementation efforts. There are three parts to it, as I had mentioned. The first part is consulting services, where we would engage a consultant or a firm of consultants to come in, help validate some of our assumptions that we have put into place regarding business continuity, help us identify locations and an appropriate schedule and timeframe to put a plan into place. That's the first part of it. Second part of it is contractual services to help someone actually move the plan into an operational phase. And the third part of this request would be for procurement of hardware and systems in order to make it happen. I, for one, am not in favor of, of bringing consulting services in unless you're prepared to actually do something about it. So, that's really what we're looking at doing, this three-phase process in the disaster recovery consulting and planning. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, mayor. Can you bring up that last slide?
Sure.
Can you just, for the benefit of, of those that are not as knowledgeable on the licensing, this one time, this is just a small fraction of what is really needed over a long period of time, is that, is that correct?
That's correct. I'll refer you to page 497 in your book, under Microsoft licensing upgrades. And for a number of years, the city of Peoria carried all of our Microsoft products under an umbrella licensing agreement called an enterprise agreement. And that went on for, for many years, until fiscal year '09, when we were forced through the budget situation to discontinue that program. Unfortunately, with costs being what they are, it is, it is going to be very cost-prohibitive for us to be able to get back into that sort of program. So, as an alternative, in order to keep our Microsoft products up to date, and be able to adapt to new systems and services and demands and licensing requirements, we're, we're taking a different route to this, and that is, we're procuring these licenses more as a, on an ad hoc basis, rather than under an umbrella. And we feel like through the, the next two or three years, we're going to be able to achieve a lot of the same goals that we would have with an enterprise agreement at a significantly less cost on a, on a fiscal year basis.
So, you see this number for the next three years being roughly 333?
I can't speak exactly, councilor, I've heard what it's going to look like over the next couple of years, but I'm more than happy to do some research on it and, and get back to you.
My recommendation, coming from that industry, is, you know, as, as we upgrade our licensing, we may have others that are coming due for a little bit, you know, in a few more years, and so I want to take a look at that budget and make sure that we've got enough coverage to make sure that we're staying on top of our licensing agreement.
We will certainly do so.
And then, the last question I have is on the disaster recovery. For the 170,000, you were mentioning that the, just a portion of that is for the actual consulting. What, what's a dollar, the total dollar amount just for that consult?
Sure, I will refer to you to page 501 in your books to talk about the disaster recovery consulting. When we began the planning, we now, we have not yet engaged a firm or, or individual to help us with this, but making some assumptions, we believe that the cost for that consulting will be around $25,000. With another certain amount, we're estimating in the range of $10,000 to $15,000 for the, the second part, which is actually the, the contractual services, with the remainder being given over to hardware and software, which will also come into play with the $20,000 in ongoing that we've requested in the supplemental.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera.
I have a question about the item on page 502. I understand the item is a carryover. Just have a simple question. How would you rate our security?
I would rate our security as excellent. As with everything else, Councilor Rivera, what we need to do is make sure that we keep our systems up to date and current. Where, one of our challenges is, as I mentioned in the, in the presentation, is reacting to, identifying, reacting, and mitigating the threats. And we have to keep our security posture up to date with current hardware in order to do that. We're approaching the, it's the five to six-year mark on our security infrastructure, and through common lifecycle practices, it needs to be replaced. And one of the things we're doing is asking for a, a carryover for this, in order that we didn't get it accomplished this year due to some other pressures on us. We're going to carry over this to next year and get it done.
So, this project is something that's done every five years?
We shoot for every five years, but it's typically a five to seven-year process, seven years really on the outside. We'd like it to be every five.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ames.
Yes, I, I noticed a number of things are shifting here. First of all, I noticed IT development services, there's no FTEs there anymore. They've all moved into IT operations. What, is that just a change in name, or is this a functional change?
Councilor Ames, what we did was, with the elimination of the applications manager in a prior budget cycle, we consolidated the applications division and the operations division, and divided the managerial responsibilities, and as such, we worked with the management and budget department to consolidate the budgets in order to make them more, make them easier to manage and keep track of. All of the FTEs that would have been previously counted under the applications development division are now showing under operations.
Okay, so, no big deal?
No big deal.
Good. I also noticed you have one additional, as you mentioned, employee, and I noticed your increase is 3.01 percent. Does that new employee basically account for most of that, or?
I'll let Katie answer that one.
Councilmember Ames, the, the increase, the, the one FTE increase actually shows up under personnel services, and that's about a 5.84 percent increase overall for the entire, for all of the various budget amounts.
Overall, yes.
Yes, 3.1.
Okay. So, the 5.84 is primarily that person?
Yes, that's related to that person.
Okay, and my other comment is that it's the 3.01, not that big of an increase, but if we go back to 12, we notice there was a big increase between 12 and 13.
Do we have a page reference on that, Councilor?
490.
It's probably one time, a lot of one time. I think you had a lot of one time. I would typically answer that, that's probably due to some one-time money that was put into the budget in last year's from 12 to 13. I would, you can probably identify those if you looked through the detail in the budget. We show fiscal year 13 ads. So, let me just see if I see anything that was major. I'm sorry, why?
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Heather.
It's the radio segments.
What that was, was we did a major infrastructure upgrade that was our core network infrastructure that was similar to the, to the security infrastructure that Councilor Rivera was asking about.
Okay.
And that saw, that was indicative of that increase.
But we're still spending at the same amount, so...
That's one of the, that's one of the periodic five, six, seven-year uplifts that we have to do on this, on these major systems.
We could see a drop in some years?
Yeah, and like on page 517, there's an additional one-time request that you'll see through the CIP. So, that kept the dollar amount very similar to last year's because of that. So, those are a lot of network infrastructure improvements that Mr. Imig was talking about.
So, yours varies a lot, year to year?
It does, and it's, it's very much lifecycle-based, and that's where you'll see the variation in it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlet.
Thank you. This department concerns me, and the reason that it concerns me is because every other department in this city depends on IT, depends on, on IT for all of the efficiencies that we want for the future, and that we are kind of banking on for our future. So, if we, if we are able to gather, gather these efficiencies now by going electronic in a lot of ways, then in the future, we will be able to deliver our service in a, in a less expensive way, such as plan approvals, making those electronic, the legal document search, taking payments from our customers over the internet. Those kinds of things are all really important to not only now, but our future, and let alone the public safety, the whole radio system that has just been put in place. That was a huge productivity tool, and something that we now have to maintain. And yet, I see in a lot of the departments, and in the IT department, that a lot of the items that were budgeted for, you had the money to, to do them, were carried over into the next year because you, you don't, you weren't able to service everything. So, my concern is that we are putting so much emphasis on creating a more efficient city, and yet, not giving you the tools with which to carry those out. We've got too many things that are being carried over. We're just now putting disaster recovery in there. I'm concerned about our future security. If we're running behind, if you don't have enough tools that you need in order to accomplish all the things that we're putting on your shoulders, then shame on us. I think we've got a, we've got a real problem, and we're not going to end up being more efficient, especially if we keep having to push things into future years and future years, even though we had the budget money for it. So, I'd like to, I'd like to find a way, if you could propose a way, if, if there can be a way, something maybe we can talk about before this budget is over, to be able to take some of the, some of the issues that we're putting on IT, and allow them to succeed in accomplishing those issues. Or, we're just going to have the same problems next year, where we're carrying over and carrying over, they aren't able to accomplish them because we don't give them the tools to do so. So, that's my concern, and I'd like to maybe have you bring back something that shows us how you can accomplish these things. What, what do you need in order to succeed? Is that fair? Carl, do you understand what I'm asking?
I do. I'm kind of reflecting on the, the question, Councilmember Carlet, and, you know, this is a discussion that Susan and I have had, as we've been looking, I guess with fresh eyes at the, the IT budget. And why don't I meet with Susan and John, and the budget staff, look at the question and see if there's anything we would suggest in terms of a response to your, to your observation.
Okay, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that we can allow this department to succeed and, and bring forth all of the things that we are requiring of them, the things that we are, you know, I don't want it to be pie in the sky when we say we want to do, you know, electronic permitting. I want it to actually happen, and I want to be able to, to allow them to make it happen.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the, the analysis that, that we're doing is, some of the, the timing issues or prioritization issues are not always resource-based. It has to do with, as John mentioned, the life cycles of some of the systems, and the ebbs and flows of the workload that he and his staff experience. So, let us, let us take a look at as you're suggesting, and, and bring back something as a follow-up in, in terms of the budget discussion.
Do you want to bring that back on the 12th as a council issue?
Sure, yeah, that would be fine. Does that seem reasonable, John, Susan?
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Ames.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, talking about being updated. We're still doing XP, is that right, and Microsoft?
We are in the process, Councilor Ames, of moving to Windows 7. There's a end of life on Windows XP from Microsoft next April, so we have one of our...
That's what I have at home.
That's, yeah. It doesn't mean it will stop functioning, it just means that they won't issue any more patches or updates for it. So, we're working very hard here in the city to get Windows 7 brought into the environment, and that's our next, our next generation that we're introducing.
I understand, a lot of people have been having fun with Windows 7.
It's a, it's a solid platform. It's, it's excellent for business, and we'll be very happy with it.
Okay, thank you.
You guys? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, council, next up is going to be the human resources department. If you'll turn to page 55, and we have Julie Ayers here to do her first budget presentation.
Just, just before we do that, would the council like to take a quick break? It's 10 to 7 by this clock, which is not necessarily accurate. Why don't we, why don't we take a break and come back at 7, by that clock?
By that clock.
Oh, is it accurate tonight?
Okay.
One of those strange things, actually, is that, so we'll take about 10-minute break.
Saved by the bell. Saved by the bell.[1241.33]